Good evening and welcome to the March 27, 2014 meeting of the North Hampton School Committee. I'm Mayor David Narcoitz. We'll begin by asking the Clerk to call the role of the school committee.
Ms. Vudival.
Present.
Ms. Pam Hanna.
Present.
Ms. Ann Hennessy.
Present.
Mr. Downey Meyer.
Present.
Ms. Lisa Minnick.
Mr. Howard Moore.
Here.
Ms. Carrie Nakorczik.
Here.
Mr. Andrew Shelpho.
Here.
Mr. Ed Zahousky.
Present.
And Mayor David Narcoitz.
Present.
Honored to have you.
Thank you, thank you. So, this meeting was originally scheduled for one primary purpose, that was the ongoing discussion of the FY 2015 budget. So, our primary agenda item tonight is both a Budget and Property Subcommittee update and a discussion on the FY 2015 budget. So, I don't know how we wish to proceed.
I believe that you chaired the Subcommittee meeting. Do you wish to do your report first or, whichever way you'd like.
Well, Mr. Moore.
I defer to you.
The report is really straightforward. We met last week. Mr. Scott presented us with what level of draft it was, but it was the draft of the budget. I think it's had a few alterations since then, but it's essentially what was presented. I think the most straightforward way to proceed would be to have Mr. Scott present this budget rather than us doing a version and then doing a version and leave it open to everybody for questions.
I think the Superintendent has some opening remarks.
Yes, I just wanted to introduce the entire school board to John Scott, whom I've appointed as the interim business manager. A little bit about Don. He was 21 years the business manager for the Frontier Regional, the Union 38th School Districts. So, he's well experienced in preparing budgets and also in monitoring those budgets throughout the year. He did five a year, every year, for each of those school districts. He's been kind enough to come out of retirement to help us with the proposed FY 15 budget here in North Hampton. A couple remarks. We are pleased to bring you this budget this evening. It's obviously a change over the past years in which we're not looking to lay off personnel or cut items, but rather to start the process of adding back and adding some new items over the previous few years. We want to thank the voters for the override, which they approved last July, and we also want to thank the mayor for his efforts in finding additional funding for schools. It appears that North Hampton has turned a corner, and indeed, that's wonderful news. And in light of that fact, that you'll be selecting a new superintendent soon, I think it's really advantageous that you have your budget under control and you have some really good programs we're going to be able to add in. I want to also say that from an outsider's perspective, I really think the mayor has done a remarkable job in balancing the needs of the community. And I think the students and the community at large will be well-served with the budget that we're proposing this night, tonight. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Scott, who's going to go through the budget with you.
Thank you. Just to give a little bit of a history of how it got developed, we were fortunate enough to have some preliminary guidance from City Hall through the mayor's office. It started out with about a 2.5 percent, looked like something that was preliminary, but something that was doable. And we had a list of, I shouldn't say wants, needs that weren't in the budget. They were above-level service, but they still were needs. And we put those to the side and we fit a couple in. And at the 2.5 percent increase level, that was just about a level-service budget. We had about another 50,000 or 60,000 we could put on top of that. And we took from our list and we put some in by priority. And a little while later, as things got a little clearer with the, in the mayor's office, we told, "Go ahead and do a 3 percent budget." So, we moved some more things in. And we still had a smaller list, but they were contained within the budget, the bulk of what we wanted to do, and that list is on your first page here. And finally, we got the third call that was, "Well, why don't you just get rid of your list and put it all in a budget?" So, we did. So, we're sitting here now with about a 3.4 percent increase. It contains the bulk of the things that administration thought were important, and our budget's up $856,000 over the year before. And again, on the first page here is the list that was actually above and beyond a level services budget. So, we're heading the right way here. And again, up top, we were having, you know, available for other uses, and it all went back and forth, and we finally were able to contain it all in the budget. So, there is, it's there. It's what we really wanted to see there. On the second page, it's a listing of expenditures by the service classification. Some of these you probably haven't seen. I've just been doing this sort of thing for my tenure as a business manager, and everyone has different ways of doing it. And I broke out our budget and compared it to last year's budget by the service classification. As you can see, our budget's at 26,364,146, up 856,000, or 3.36 percent. And down to bottom is a breakout by school. And the people that were at the meeting earlier, and I've seen this, this page has changed. It was just a classification change down to the bottom. We had one school negative, and it was because we had moved a salary from there to, from one of the schools into the district-wide budget, and it was kind of skewing what really happened. So, this is apples to apples. This is the only page that has been changed. And again, you can see each school, how it's affected. And up top, I just wanted to hit on a couple of the highlights. I know it's hard to see, but I like to do it this way because you can see the areas in which each service classification has changed and try to define why that has happened. And the first one, I'm just going to hit some of the major ones. Four down is the human resources, excuse me, it's the legal line. And that's down because I guess all your negotiations are over with now, and we were able to reduce the need for outside lawyers for that purpose. We also have a building technology. We have beefed up a lot of the areas. This happens to be the teaching side of it, but we have beefed up a lot of the areas and supplies in the different departments as well, especially in the area of technology. Teaching is up 4.25 percent, and all the raises and all the contracts are contained within the budget line items. So, there's nothing hanging out there. I know a lot of times it's, it has been tough without agreements in place, and people had to estimate where they were going to be. But now, we know where we should be. We have professional development. You're going to see that up because we have included a lot of that money into the different schools for professional development of the principals. We've added quite a lot there. By contract, they would do some of that. And most of the other large ones is because of these staff increases that carried over from the first page. So, I mean, they're all pretty explainable. On the next page is, we've broken out our school choice and our circuit breaker because they're our two major revolving fund accounts. We, under school choice, we start by saying the money we collect this year in the current year is the money that we're going to spend next year. That's the way it has been handled here. So, we started this year with $1.8 million. We're projecting in the current year to take in $1.35 million, which will be very, very close. We have the roster. We're on track to spend $1.25 million, and we would end this year with $1,964,470. Contained in this budget is expenditure uses from the circuit breaker, I mean, from the school choice revolving fund of $1.6 million, which will leave us with $327,000 balance at the end of the year. And that's a good thing, I think. I know sometimes it gets kind of touchy with trying to measure how much money to keep on hand in case of an emergency when you're trying to run programs, and you're not doing programs because you're hanging on to money. So, that's a good sign. The circuit breaker, it gets expended in the same year, but we started this year with We're on track right now. We know we're going to get $546,000. And this year, we're on track to spend $687,000. So, we're going to end this year with $241,000. We have to do a little estimating on next year. We're estimating that we're going to receive about $550,000, which is more about what we've been doing. It's been pretty stable over the last several years. And this budget contains expenditures of $570,000 of that under out-of-district tuitions. We'd pay a lot of tuitions with that, and we'd end with $220,000. So, together, you've got almost $550,000 to have on hand as your kind of like a free cash thing to solve unforeseen things that might pop up. That's about 2.1 percent of your budget is contained in those two items. So, I know that, I come from a regional school district, and to have 2 or 3 percent in your free cash, which is actually free cash in a regional district, is about where you want to be. So, I think that this is, it's a good reserve to have in case something were to happen. And then, the fourth page is just a synopsis of our total expenditures for, including grants and all the revolving funds. And again, up top in the right-hand column, we're going to spend $26,364,000. That's going to be coming from the appropriation from the city. And then, we have $1.4 million in grants under these areas, and then we have 2.0, almost $3 million of other funds from revolving funds. And again, most of it's school choice and circuit breaker. So, we're going to be spending $30,648,000 in this budget, of which $26 million would come from City Hall. Before I go any farther, anybody have any questions?
Mr. Meyer.
I have a question on the school choice revolving account. Can you tell me why you don't have a projected revenue number for fiscal 15? So, if you have, you have revenue expenses for intake in '14, and then '14, the expenses projected. I'm just wondering, you only have the debit side up for that.
The fund and City Hall will have a whole year in it. They'll have the extra $1.67 million, whatever we collect. But the way it's spent here is that goes on reserve, basically. We spend in '15 the money we collect in '14. So, this is the pot of money under circuit, I mean, under school choice that we would be dealing with. Circuit breakers opposite. We spend the money in the same year that we get it. So, but again, if you went to City Hall and looked at the books, we'd have on deposit this year's revenue spread.
Okay. And I just had a question about the fact that we are seeming to lean more heavily on school choice going into the FY 15 budget. I'm just wondering what's behind that.
On paper, compared to last year's budget during budget time, it's about the same. But we are on track only to spend 1.2 million of the 1.0, I think it was almost 1.5 million. I think it was just a balancing act to spend what we could, get what we could in the budget, and still have the reserve. So, I mean, it would just be a function of taking something out of the budget and adding to your school choice, if you know what I mean. It was.
So, this was, so you think that that level of spending was depressed, sorry, I mean, the 1.25 million was a bit lower maybe in order to build the reserves back up in prior use of school choice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to know what the, on this second page, what is the medical therapy, is that insurance?
That would be medical services like occupational therapy, physical therapy, things of that nature, speech.
So, that's within the special education?
Right, yeah.
I just had one more, which was, I'm just looking at the budget for fiscal '14. We had school choice funds of 1.46, and we're expending 1.25. Were these, was that 1.46 million that was basically programmed into the budget, or was that?
At your budget, the way I understand it, that was part of the big plan. We didn't require, we were able to spend some things from the budget that were scheduled to be paid from school choice. So, we didn't.
So, was this, does this have anything to do with the personnel reserve that was set aside and so, partially? Okay. I see the personnel reserve is in the adjusted, I guess my last question would be, there's the unadjusted budget fiscal 2014, adjusted budget. I'm assuming the unadjusted budget is the one that was voted in July, that the adjusted would show transfers between accounts to date.
Right. And we had to take some of that money to spread as the contracts all settled.
Other comments or questions about the budget?
Okay. The next thing in the pack is a spreadsheet, I know it's kind of small, but you get it all on a couple of pages, that details all the use of these outside funds and where it will be, at what school and for what service. And again, it's a little over $4 million, and it details, again, if you were to look at the school choice in the first column on the last page, that's the $1.6 million I alluded to before. But here, it actually details at what school and for which service it will be used, and actually, it does it for all the revolving funds and all the grants, where they're going to be spent, and what they're going to be spent on. So, that should tie back into the other thing. And then, it's just basically a line item budget, I think, in the way you're accustomed to seeing it, school by school that follows. And I mean, you can get into that as deeply as you want. But again, it all, this is the program, school by school, and it's all detailed in total on that second page that we had just looked at. So, I don't know what anybody wants to do about going through all that.
So, comments about the line item portion of the budget?
I think everyone is shocked because it's such a different situation from what I understand you had to deal with before.
And I guess I would just maybe comment a little bit about the thought process, because I know people may be wondering, you know, how, why this change. You know, when we put together the plan for the override, the proposal for the override was based on a four-year plan, and that we would try to build in some targets for what we could fund, not just to save services in the current fiscal year, but to try to create a sustainable trajectory over the next three years. And so, we started with asking the school department to do between 2.5 to 3 percent as kind of the starting point, because we still had a number of issues that we needed to be able, we were waiting for school aid, we were waiting for health care, we were waiting for a couple of other numbers. And so, those, in between those conversations with the Superintendent and Mr. Scott, those numbers were starting to take more shape. So, that's how we were able to get to where we think is a comfortable percentage, which is that 3.4 percent, which is within the, you know, within the sort of five, that giant piece of cardboard that's hanging in my office that I took all around during the override. It fits within that framework. And we're still going to be able to finish the, as part of our budget, we're going to be putting almost a half million dollars into a fiscal stability fund, which was part of the plan. It'll help extend the life of the override. So, and again, I think the other key thing, my takeaway in looking at the list as it was being presented to me, I mean, these are items, you know, these are not, you know, these are not sort of luxury things that were being added. These are things that we should be putting in our budget. These are things that are dealing directly with key issues in our schools, you know, not the least of which is our efforts to raise our schools up, you know, out of Level 3, the two schools that are in Level 3, so that we can return to being a Level 1 district. So, I view these as, I think we have to, I know the newspaper this morning was talking about how we're adding and adding and adding, but if you look at what's been cut over time, we're trying to just sort of eke our way back. And I think these are some, if you look at the actual, the positions that are being added, I think the Superintendent and the AL team, what I know was a difficult process to really try to look at across all the buildings and work collaboratively to figure out what are the key things that need to be put back in. So, that's sort of the rationale for how we came to the 3.4 percent number. And so, that's, if there's questions about that.
So, I guess with the structure of the override, there was a desire to build up reserves, and then there was the override reserves. There was an additional.
That was the fiscal stabilization fund, yeah.
And so, I guess there was supposed to be a separate vote if the City Council was to draw on those funds? Was that the?
It's not that it's a separate vote, it's just that it's a.
Recognition.
Yeah, it requires a two-thirds vote to take money out of stabilization. So, it would require me to actively take money out of stabilization.
So, this budget does not require the city to?
It doesn't. And actually, the '15 budget will be adding money to that fund. The plan was we put money in, we'd establish the fund in '14, we'd add to it in '15, we'd continue to add to it in '16, and then potentially then need to start drawing down on it in '16 to stay on, in '17 to stay on that glide path. My hope actually, and we're still continuing to look at the numbers, I'm actually hoping we can add more than we had projected potentially, because the goal, I mean, my goal would be to extend it beyond just that four years, because as, you know, the $2.5 million question last time was, well, what happens after a year, you know, once we get to the fourth year? And so, the goal, my stated goal all along was, I don't want to, you know, I want us to see if we can extend that model longer, whether through finding other savings, whether through new revenues, whether through, you know, the state finally funding us adequately. And so, that's my hope, yeah. But we're, right now, we're following the plan. We're not having to tap into any of those reserves. And we're still also trying to maintain city reserves as well so that we can keep our recently-upgraded bond rating strong, so.
And could you give the committee a sense of, the budget that we're looking at is the appropriation plus grants plus any thing we might produce from revolving funds, but we all know that there's additional funds that are expended.
Exactly.
In the purpose of running the schools that appear, if you look at the end of your report, those are all detailed in. And I think that's an additional $12 million up to.
Something on that order, yeah.
I'm just wondering, we're, you know, we're sitting here looking at a 3.35 percent increase, and I'm just wondering, from the larger perspective, what growth is the city looking at if we include all those additional costs that are part of running the system?
You mean in terms of what does the school increase represent?
Right. If you take, yeah, I mean, if we're looking at next year's end of year report.
Yeah.
And build again all the costs that are taking place, not in front of us on this budget. Are they commensurate with that 3.35, or could they be more?
Potentially slightly more, but I can't give you an exact number, yeah. I'm, we're still so in deep, looking at all the other budgets, I can give you an answer for the next meeting or between now and then.
No, I'm just, yeah, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Because again, that's something that a lot of people aren't aware of when they book the school budget.
No doubt about it.
There's a larger, there's a larger, you know.
Yeah.
Relative services.
And some of this is also, I mean, we were, some of the original, you know, that projection, that sheet that I have, you know, actually hoped to do actually more, but because some of the other healthcare numbers came in a little higher, state aid remarkably came in even lower than our really conservative estimates, so some of the numbers moved. But I'll try to get that number so we can fill out that picture. But in other budget areas, we're trying to, in our general fund departments, we're trying to stay within those parameters that we laid out in that, you know, culture and recreation services, we targeted like a 2.7 percent growth factor. Public safety was a little bit over 3 percent. Public works, the same. General government was, I think, 2.5 percent or 2.75 percent. So, I think we're going to be able to stay within all those parameters as well as make the, you know, put some funds into rebuilding our stabilization accounts. So, but I can, that's a good point, and I'll try to find that statistic.
Other comments or questions?
I would only have to say that those new members that have joined us this year, to sit here and discuss the budget as we're discussing it this evening is something that hasn't happened in my six years, and I was quoting a paper saying that today. And to say it to each one of you here tonight, I'd like to say it to you publicly, because this is really something that we as an entire city should be proud of. The folks came out and voted for an override. Our mayor had a vision as to how to bring it forth to the people of North Hampton in a way in which they understood the money would be seen in overs, seen in a fiscally responsible way with a vision. And I think what we've heard from the mayor tonight, that we're on track to spend this money out for the next several years in a way in which we should be able to continue to fund schools well and continue to add to the stabilization fund to try to stretch this out even farther as a testament to our mayor and to the people of North Hampton for how they value education and the services that we so desperately want for all of our citizens of North Hampton. So, I'm happy to be here with you tonight to be able to share this excellent news, because for the rest of us, we've oftentimes come here and it's been kind of a cloud that's overhung of the meetings, and that really has been lifted. And so, it's a wonderful thing to be able to be part of such a community and such a government that is fiscally responsible and open to be able to bring funds forward in order to maintain services that we treasure here in North Hampton. So, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you Superintendent for working so hard on this. Thank you, Don, for coming in and helping, and I think we all have something really here special and we can really be proud of.
Ms. Vudival.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Mr. Scott for the clarity, and it was just wonderfully put together, and it's very easy to read. And I just want to thank you for coming in and helping us out and doing their part. So, thank you very much. It looks excellent.
Other comments? Downey?
So, you'll have to indulge me, because I try very hard with the school, you know, things that are paid sort of, I know the school choice, they count up the days at the end of the year and then provide it to you, and I, and the distinction from prior year school choices, which is what you presented in the past. But I just want to go back to the projected uses in fiscal '15 of 1.67 million dollars. And we're, if I were to use a similar number for revenue in fiscal '15 to the one that's projected for, of $1.35 million, I'm looking at that gap there. And I'm just wondering if I, if I'm, and again, we don't know what that school choice number is going to be, because it obviously involves the decisions of families from sending district, from our district as well. Are we looking at potentially seeing that $327,000 number decline significantly unless we make some other decisions within the budget? Again, going back to your guideline, and I think with something we've tried to maintain as a school committee of having, you know, some reserve to deal with contingency during the school year.
I think that the projection on the revenue for the current year is going to be a little light. There's a thing called a sped increment that you get, you get $5,000 per student and then an increment to pay for all the sped costs. That number wasn't available when I did this, so I didn't count it very highly. So, I really think that your $300,000 is going to be, quite possibly, be more than that. So, but yeah, I mean, the theory is right, that we are using a little bit more. But I kind of backed into it because of the balance that I felt was appropriate to have on hand.
Right.
And just kind of worked it backwards for this particular year. But things did go backwards on your school choice numbers. I mean, you could be facing, you know, $100,000 to do, move around a little bit and use less next year. It's kind of a moving target, as it were.
Yeah, I'm looking forward into fiscal, I'm already thinking about fiscal '16. Yeah, I'm looking forward into fiscal, I'm already thinking about fiscal 16, I mean, really, because, you know, fiscal 15 is here, it's just, you know, where is that prior year school choice, I know that it was as high as $600,000 within the tenure of some people in this committee, and it went down to essentially nothing.
Zero.
Which we felt are very uncomfortable with, and again, as the mayor, you know, working with the city budget, was in a similar situation to where free cash was to nothing, and again, it's not the way to run a system effectively.
You've got to bear in mind too, though, that you do have a whole year on reserve. You choose not to, and I think it's a good idea not to do that, but I mean, it could ease the strain, should it decline in such a way that it was hurtful.
Right.
You do have $1.6 million you can get your hands on.
Right.
So.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
This is, I think, a question probably for Superintendent, just, could you tell us, what tiered support specialist do?
I could.
They're a big part of this budget, but you know exactly what it's a job.
Yes. There is a new law that was passed last year, it will go into effect July 1st of this year, it's called Chapter 222, it's a discipline law, and basically what it says is that we need to provide education for all students who are either suspended or expelled. It's no longer just special education students. It also indicates that if we have students who are being suspended, for instance, and they need to, there needs to be formal letters sent to parents, and there needs to be a meeting scheduled, and if the parent is not able to come in for three days, the student has to be in school those three days, and we need to provide education. So basically, what we're looking at is two elementary specialists to be split among the four schools, so they'll have two and a half days in each school, basically, and also one at JFK. The way we're doing it with JFK is we currently have such a re-engagement center or an in-school suspension room, whichever you'd like to call it, which is manned by an ESP. The new law says that the person doing that has to be a certified teacher, so we're adding some funds to that position we currently have to make them a certified teacher. So basically, these people will be working with students who are not able to be in the classroom, but yet need educational services, and we would also look to have those people, if there's no one in those rooms at that point, to work with regular ed and special ed teachers in terms of tiered intervention with those students who need it. So if we're spreading these people out, I think that they will be more than busy with the things that need to be done.
What is tiered intervention?
Tiered intervention is trying to keep kids out of the needs for special education services, so that you can work in one-to-one or small groups and provide different needs, different programs, different interventions to help students become more on track with their learning. So we sort of ratcheted up, we try different things for a period of time, if it doesn't work, we try something else, et cetera, before we go to the special education qualifications.
Thank you.
Question, I'm following up on that. So.
And how much money did the state give us as part of this new law?
Well, I might say that this is another unfunded mandate.
Yeah.
And I might also say that this is still a very difficult situation to handle, because we don't have one full-time in each of the elementary schools, and when we don't have this person, it goes back to the principal having to do this. And as you know, we don't have assistant principals in the schools, so it really is going to be quite difficult, but we really felt we needed to start at a limited number, and hopefully this is going to do the trick, and if not, you may hear next year that you need more help with that, depending on how that runs.
Mr. Ball?
So the kids that, are they on 504s or IEPs, are we trying to avoid that?
No.
It's just discipline issues that we're talking about, right?
They could be or not be.
Okay.
These are students who, for one reason or another, would be facing suspension or expulsion.
Okay.
Or, you know, there's been sort of an unwritten situation where at the elementary level, particularly at the lower level, if you have students who are having a bad day and unable to really be in classrooms, et cetera, we've often called parents and said, would you like to pick him up or her up for the afternoon and come back to school tomorrow? We're no longer able to do that, they have to stay in school. That's part of the issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Shumpert?
I think there's a question from Superintendent, just looking at some of the line items that have gone up the most, and one is classroom technology, which is great, classroom instructional technology. Can you give some specifics on what that includes?
Yes, I can. Our student reporting system is new this year, it's Aspen, and we need additional software to man that system.
So that's included in instructional technology? Aspen is included?
That's included in the front page, the additional items under your supplies and things.
I'm looking at this line item, classroom instructional technology.
Right, I believe that's 2,000 in each of the schools, is that true?
This says there's an $18,000 increase going into the budget, which is, again, I'm all for it, I was just curious about what that might entail.
Is that under a particular school or in general?
It was in the second page of the packet.
In one instance, we're adding to the teaching for technology, we're putting a second person in, so there'll be two divided among the four elementary schools, we're doing that. Don, do you know what we're talking about here?
I don't, it was nothing from the front page, we did have a $45,000, it was just beefing up, I think, to get some supplies and things of that nature to the teacher.
Okay.
There used to be, I think some of that money used to be in a district-wide account, and our director of technology felt that each school should have their own amount, and some of that is also going to be used in terms of the webpages and getting those done, there's a stipend in there for people to do those webpages for each of those schools.
Great.
Best I can tell you, but I can get more specifics for you, and I'll send it to you.
Thanks. Mr. Ball?
So is that why the teaching is increased by 4.25, is because of the technology and also because of the unfunded mandate for the teams specialists, is that?
Yes, most of the items on the front page are positions. We've also added a halftime sped teacher for Ryan Road, we've added a speech language teacher at Leeds going from 0.6 to 0.8, we've added another 0.33 for the technology and video instruction at the high school, and a reading interventionist, this is an ESP that was not in the budget currently, that will be also for Ryan Road. We have an elementary technology specialist, which I've mentioned, which will, we have one now, this will be two, to be shared by the four elementary schools. We're also looking to increase the attendance and social worker time, she's currently 0.60 here, we're looking to have her full-time, there's a tremendous need for that in our system, and so all of those are really positions, very little is in terms of additional supplies, software and licensing.
And that far-right column gives you the total FTEs, the 6.43 FTEs? Oh, sorry, Dan.
So I just wanted to make sure I heard Superintendent correctly, that those tiered support specialists will have a dual role, one is to meet the requirements of chapter 222, but they will also be providing tiered support as part of the tiered support model.
Right.
It has nothing to do with discipline, but has to do with, you know, effective teaching model.
But we also want to make sure that people understand they're just not going to sit there if there's no kids in the room.
Right.
They're going to be busy, and they certainly have things that they need to do, and these are some of the things that the principals feel very strongly about, that we don't have enough intervention, and we could use these people doing it, because we'll be looking for certified special education teachers.
So the, I think the thought process was this bud, this meeting was scheduled as a, sort of, for sort of deliberation for presentation, with the goal that you'd have, the committee would have some time to then mull this all over, you know, hear from constituents, with a goal of then taking a final vote at your next meeting, your next regular meeting in April, which is in time for the deadline of April 15th to get the budget to me, and then I have another month to put that together with the whole city budget. So, so really, the purpose tonight was to do that, and I'm assuming we can put these materials up on the website, so that residents will have a chance to review them between now and then and give you feedback on it, thinking we won't get too many complaints, as many, there won't be too many complaints, per se, but, so that's sort of the thought process, I don't know if folks have other questions tonight, or if there's additional information they'd like to have between now and next meeting, to answer any questions.
I would only say that if, as you look through this, if you have questions, please feel free to either contact Mr. Scott or myself, we'd be happy to respond to them.
I have one more, just a million questions about what is, technology specialist, is that, I'm assuming, I figured out the technology, is it across the board, like educational component, or the maintenance of hardware component?
No.
What sort of role is it?
It's a match to the person we have currently, and what it's for is to directly teach students and to work with teachers on technology, so it's a teaching position.
I have one more question, is there anything that didn't get into the budget that we're, that we really, really, you know, were going to still work for, I mean, is this, because it seems to me to be a really nice full budget, I love what we added in, because I hated taking out things, is there anything else that we really had to cut that we are missing?
We did not cut anything.
I mean, choose not to add back in is what I meant to say, pardon me.
We prioritized as an administrative team, with all the principals and others present, to come up with these items, and I have to say that we're very grateful for the additional funds that we have. I do not want to appear ungrateful. Are there still needs in your district? Yes, there are still needs that are out there, and I do have a whole list, but I don't really want to talk about those. But please be aware that when you do next year's budget, it's not like this is it and you've got everything back, I mean, you're still missing in general some things that we feel are really important, but we prioritized and we think that these are the most important for this year.
Okay, well, thank you, and no, I don't want to appear negative either, and I am very, very appreciative, so much so that it kind of felt a little bit euphoric, and I wanted to make sure, you know, to have my feet on the ground a little bit, but that's great, wonderful.
Yes.
I don't want to muddy the waters, and this might be just as a new person, I'm cognizant of us voting on this on April 10th, and also about transportation costs, so this is not including any additional costs for busing?
This is...
Correct.
I believe it's the, it meets the contract.
Contract.
Okay.
It's $60,000 addition.
There is a $60,000 increase, but that was always anticipated, so, yeah, but it's basically level service of our current transportation system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. So if there's no other comments or questions, I guess I would just remind folks that we have, we'll be together again on Tuesday, next Tuesday, we have our special school committee meeting at 7:15 in city council chambers, got to make sure to remind people that it's in council chambers. Then next, there's a conference committee meeting on April 8th at 4:30 here at JFK, and then the next regular school committee meeting will be on April 10th, 2014. I would also just remind the many folks who are watching this at home, live, that we do have the public meetings tomorrow here at JFK with the superintendent candidates, beginning at 3:30, and going in sort of one-hour increments with each one of the three candidates, so members of the community who want to have an opportunity to come and meet and interact with those candidates can do that here tomorrow afternoon at 3:30, so.
At JFK?
Here at JFK.
Okay.
In this room in the community center, community room. So, those are the future business and meeting dates, and I would now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
To adjourn? A second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The meeting is adjourned.